Calling to all of the Monday, March 20th, 2017, regular meeting of the 36th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Gravlin?
Here.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman? Councilmember Turbrack?
Here.
Melanie O'Dwyer?
Here.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve with one slight change, that we move communications to after item number 10, and have item number 11, the closed session after.
Very good. Is there a second?
Support is amended.
Very good. We have, the motion has been proposed and seconded. Any other additions or changes? Hearing none, then Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now I see Pastor Adam Grohl with us this evening, so please stand for the invocation.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this evening that you've given us, we thank you for this country that we have, the privileges we have as being free, that is a privilege that many others tonight don't have around the world, and so we're thankful for that. Lord, we're thankful for the city council and our dedication to the city, the care for the city. We pray your blessing on them and in their role here, and on them personally, as well as they sacrifice what they do to lead this community. Lord, we pray for wisdom and discernment for them tonight. Pray your blessing on this evening that you would lead them wisely in all they do for the benefit of the community. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on your god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. When you speak on a specific agenda item, you may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When an individual has completed their comments, we ask that you refrain from gestures of approval or disapproval, because that can be intimidating to some residents. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Dan Mihoesk. I'm a resident here of the City of Berkeley. I'm also the chairman of the Berkeley Beautification Advisory Committee, and what I wanted to do is bring everyone's attention to our Second Annual Tree Walk, which will be happening on Saturday, April 22nd, at 9:00 a.m. We will be meeting in the parking lot across from the Berkeley High School, and all volunteers will basically distribute flyers that are basically door hangers to all the homes in the city that do not currently have a tree in the easement. So we all probably saw in the windstorm, a lot of trees getting knocked down, and just the construction that's planned on Harvard will also cause the loss of about 20 trees. So that's just something that we, as a city, need to work on to always replenish our trees. So we hope you'll see us, we hope to see you there. Our Facebook page, Berkeley Beautification Advisory Committee, does have a link, and we'd love to see you post there that you are interested in joining us, or you may also email us at BerkeleyBAC@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Hello, my name is Dennis Henin. I'm a Berkeley resident, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Berkeley Citizens United. Soon, you'll be discussing our aging infrastructure and our decaying buildings. I suspect that in the near future, you'll be coming to the voters to Berkeley to ask for money for repairs and improvements. Meanwhile, the money that's now in your charge is not being spent well. For several months, we've been watching and reviewing materials that come before council. We noticed each month, the city's part-time building inspector received checks of around $10,000, nearly $120,000 a year. This seemed excessive, but is it? We decided to find out. After carefully reviewing all the contracts and all the invoices of all the city's inspectors, and comparing them to others in the region, we identified three major problems. The city's building inspector is paid at least $35,000 a year above market rates. All of the inspector's contracts are written in a way that favors speed of work over quality of work. And finally, all of the contracts are no-bid contracts. Further, this all ties into the sidewalk issue we discussed earlier this month. The sidewalks are a very visible indicator that codes are not being enforced. What things are going on inside these buildings that we can't see from the street? The contracts for the inspectors give no incentive for enforcement. As we discuss the sidewalks, most of you voiced your desire to increase code enforcement, and some of you even said that maybe the way to do that is to increase funding for the building department and to add more staff. But perhaps there's no need to increase spending at all. As we enter the budget season, we encourage you to carefully review the contracts throughout the city. Are we paying too much? Would it be more economical to hire employees instead of contractors? Or should we put contracts out to bid, so we get competitive prices? Are the contracts written to achieve our goals of safety and respect for the residents? These are just some of the questions we think you should be asking as you consider how to spend taxpayer dollars. We have already provided to you our report detailing these facts. For anyone else interested, the report's also available on our website, BerkeleyCitizensUnited.org. If you have any questions about the report, we are always open to discussion, and we are always looking for ways to work with the city to find ways to improve things for everybody. Thank you.
Wendy Zabramski, 3340 Gardner Avenue. I am speaking tonight on the sidewalks. We talked a couple of weeks ago about working on, you know, getting this ordinance up to date. I don't know if we have a work session date yet. I would certainly like to be informed when it is. Yesterday and today, I spent some time going around and taking yet more pictures, and I'm still seeing many, 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 many code violations. I'd be happy to pass these around. Interestingly enough, I'd like to point out that there's a house on Oakshire that, again, is still not, the sidewalk's not open. That's six houses away from Patengale School. And interestingly enough, this same builder has a corner lot that he's working on, just a few blocks down on Buckingham, that is all well fenced around, inside the sidewalk. So it can be done. I will, again, pass these around. I do want to point out that there are a couple that the sidewalks are indeed passable. You know, that's an improvement over what we've seen. Some enforcing evidently is being done, and it's good to see. I will, oh. Pass these around for you to consider. Yesterday was a very lovely day, otherwise people were out everywhere. There were people on bikes, there were people on skiboards, there were strollers, lots of dog walkers, and, you know, we've talked about, you know, the closing of the sidewalks, and I understand, you know, that the safety is the number-one concern. However, seeing people out and about, the builders are here to make money. We live here. We pay taxes here. We want to be able to use the sidewalks. So it was mentioned a couple of weeks ago in that ordinance update, to have them close as little as possible. And I would just like to see that, you know, this, when this work session happens. And the other point I have is that, this is May 20th, or March 20th, almost the end of March, the building season is taken off like crazy. We know it's going to be another busy year for building. And if we're still seeing this, these pictures now, this is when building is really going to be taking off. If we don't start enforcing them this season, it's going to get away from us again. And I, as a citizen, you know, couldn't possibly consider approving any kind of bond issue for more money until I see fiscal responsibility within our own city council and the planning and all this is going on. Now, the, it was August when this was first brought up, according to the minutes, that this was brought to city council on the condition of the sidewalks. And I know it was brought up many, many times at the planning commission meeting. However, after the 27th of September, when there were major problems with the minutes being slighted, for now, all the citizens' comments just say so-and-so commented, doesn't say what they commented on. So, you know, unless you go back and watch now the meetings, you don't know what somebody commented on, because they've chose to take minutes ever so slightly. That's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. My name is Ross Gavin. I'm a proud resident of the City of Berkeley, a proud member of the Downtown Development Authority and of the Citizens Advisory Committee as well. I am here under a little bit of a different matter, though. I'm also a deputy treasurer in the Oakland County Treasurer's Office, and each year on March 31st is the annual tax foreclosure deadline. So basically, what happens is it's about a 28-month process that individuals go through. There are notices sent out if you weren't able to pay your taxes in the current year, your property taxes. And so what we do is we try to take as many additional reasonable steps as possible to let people know that they could be an imminent threat of foreclosure. And so what we do is we'll go around to city councils, we'll talk and get the word out in local communities for anybody that may have a friend, a neighbor, who has delinquent property taxes. And so at this point, what we're doing is we're just trying to get the word out. The treasurer does visits to residents throughout the county. I'll be doing some here in the City of Berkeley, to try to let people know to contact our office, if you want to get you on a payment plan, if you're eligible. That way, you can make monthly payments and avoid any property tax foreclosure. So that's kind of why I'm here tonight, just hope that you'll pass the word around, and if anybody in the city, or you folks, know of anybody who is facing property tax foreclosure, who has 2014 and prior-year property taxes that are owing. So if they do, please have them, you know, they can contact me, they can contact our office. Like I said, we want to do it before this March 31st deadline, because we're kind of coming up against it, and we really want to make sure that we protect people's property values, keep people in their homes, and kind of ensure that we all have good communities to live in. So that's why I'm here. Thank you very much for your time, and like I said, if you know of anybody, or if anybody of the residents do, please have them contact our office, the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular 36th City Council meeting on Monday, March 6, 2017. Warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1312. Proclamation number P-0117. Matter of celebrating the 145th anniversary of Arbor Day and designating the week of Sunday, April 9th, to Saturday, April 15th, 2017, as Arbor Week. And proclamation number P-0217. Matter proclaiming the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Support.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Any changes, corrections? Hearing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I have asked Councilmember Gravlin to read proclamation O-117.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, celebrating the 145th anniversary of Arbor Day and designating the week of Sunday, April 9th, through Saturday, April 15th, 2017, as Arbor Week. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and stated, "Other holidays repose upon the past; Arbor Day proposes for the future." And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas, the City of Berkeley is proud to be a recipient of the Tree City USA Award for the 27th consecutive year, and in 2004, Berkeley became the first community in the state of Michigan to receive the Sterling Award as a leader and innovator in community forestry. And whereas, it is the intent of the city council to pledge its commitment to the understanding, education, and support of the global environmental challenge, and therefore to spotlight for our community some of the best things this city can affirm. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims Section 1, that the week of Sunday, April 9th, through Saturday, April 15th, 2017, be and hereby is designated as Arbor Week in the City of Berkeley. And the city council urges all residents to nurture and care for existing trees, as well as plant new ones, and to become aware of how beneficial trees are to the earth's beauty and environment. And Section 2, that Wednesday, April 12th, 2017, is hereby proclaimed as Arbor Day in the City of Berkeley. And all residents are urged to support efforts to care for our trees and to support the Berkeley Tree Board, celebrating their 27th anniversary, pursuing various programs, making the community aware of the importance of trees, bushes, and shrubs. And Section 3, in celebration of the above, the Department of Public Works, Tree Board, and members of the St. John Woods Homeowners Association will be planting three new trees in the Coolidge Right-of-Way, north of 12 Mile and south of Webster. Proclaimed this 20th day of March, 2017, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. And now I have asked Councilmember Kadakel to please read proclamation O-217.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas, abuse and neglect are suffered by children in our communities, regardless of age, race, gender, or economic situation. And whereas, one in four girls and one in six boys will be sexually abused before the age of 18. And whereas, this reported maltreatment is only a portion of the overall problem threatening our children. For so many cases go unreported, and today's technology has brought with it a new and dangerous form of child endangerment, the online predator. And whereas, the devastating consequences of physical and emotional abuse of our children affects the community as a whole, and finding solutions needs to be attended by the community as a whole. And whereas, the state of Michigan has mandatory reporting by professionals working with children of any suspected abuse and neglected incidences, a major step, but more is needed in the community. And whereas, Carehouse of Oakland County works to break the cycle of child abuse and neglect, provides a protective circle of light and hope for a better life, and advocates for the safety and protection of children. And whereas, Carehouse of Oakland County partners with community organizations and agencies to offer programs and services aimed at preventing child abuse and neglect. Knowing the effective programs succeed because of the involvement and partnerships created among schools, social service agencies, religious and civic organizations, the business community, and law enforcement agencies, children deserve to grow and thrive in an environment that nurtures and keeps them safe. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the City, the Council of the City of Berkeley do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley, Michigan. We call upon all citizens, community agencies, organizations, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent the abuse of our children, thereby strengthening and protecting the community in which we live. Proclaimed this 20th day of March, 2017, at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. This is a very serious matter, when one in four girls and one in six boys are sexually abused by the age of 18. These are unacceptable numbers, outrageous, and we all, as a community, must do what we can to stem this tide of child abuse and neglect that's happening across our country. Thank you for reading it and bringing it to our attention. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two?
Presentations matter receiving a status update from the Citizens Advisory Committee for infrastructure improvements.
Is there a motion to receive a status report from the Citizens Advisory Committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to receive by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Baumgau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Passed out to you before the, before the meeting, is the report and recommendations of the 2017 City of Berkeley Citizens Advisory Committee. I do want to, before turning it over to our vice chair, I do want to take this opportunity to compliment this body. This body has done an amazing amount of work. They've worked hand-in-hand with the city staff in order to get a full and accurate picture of the city's financial position and our options on addressing infrastructure matters, as well as facility matters. I don't know if, Melanie, if you're going to do this, but each of the members that are here, if they could just take a moment to stand up, their work ought to be applauded. So without further ado, I would turn it over to our vice chair, Ms. Melanie Stevens.
Hello, good evening. Thanks, Matt. Melanie Stevens, I'm here this evening to deliver the report and recommendations for the 2017 City Berkeley Citizens Advisory Committee. In December 2016, the Berkeley City Council appointed 15 Berkeley residents to the 2017 Citizens Advisory Committee for Infrastructure Improvements, referred to as CAC. The CAC was charged with the job of developing and presenting recommendations to the city council regarding a variety of infrastructure challenges facing the city and its residents at its March 20th, 2017, meeting. Specifically, those challenges include the city's aging water system, which can no longer meet our capacity and safety needs, our deteriorating roads, our inoperable ice arena coupled with the community center, as well as recommended improvements to City Hall and the historic fire hall. In order to meet our goal, the CAC held six public meetings to review and discuss the city's infrastructure challenges. The CAC also toured the ice arena, community center, city hall, and historic fire hall. The CAC would like to thank the city's staff that throughout this process have been extremely helpful and forthcoming in providing a wealth of information and have been responsive to our requests. This allowed the CAC to gain an in-depth understanding of the city's infrastructure challenges, as well as the financial impact on current and future residents, and addressing or not addressing these issues. While it would have been preferable that an investment in these infrastructure issues would have been made in years past, the recession of 2007 to 2010 and the lengthy recovery period thereafter certainly contributed to the challenges of doing so. We would like to make specific note that our recommendations took a number of different considerations into account beyond the declining physical state of our infrastructure. They included the financial impact that any funding of infrastructure improvements would have on residents, with specific consideration for our seniors and single-parent households. This was also, there was also concern and consideration given to maintaining Berkeley as an affordable city to live in and not taxing current or future residents out of our community. The CAC's recommendations are based on a combination of input from residents, subject matter experts, and city staff, along with what the CAC members feel are efficient and prudent actions that must be taken to preserve the foundation that our city is literally built upon. It is with all these considerations in mind and by majority vote that the CAC make the following recommendations. Water system. The CAC recommends that the city council take the appropriate action to add a capital improvement component to future water bills, and specifically, number one, to do so using the funding method to be recommended by Plant Moran in its upcoming report on our water system, likely a formula based on usage. Two, that the initial capital improvement component rate be set using a calculation to achieve an annual collection not to exceed 110% of the water main replacement cost of the 2017 Harvard Road Water Main and Road Replacement Project. Three, that the rate be the same for all future years. Four, that such funds collected through the capital improvement component shall be used only for capital improvements and not maintenance and repair, which are funded in other ways. Five, that capital improvements to water mains should coincide with capital improvements to roads whenever possible. Furthermore, we support DPW Director Derek Schuler's recommendation that capital improvements be made on at least .5 miles of water mains per year or more when possible. Local roads. The CAC recommends that city council take the appropriate action to place on the ballot a capital improvement millage for roads in the amount of two mills, and specifically, one, that such millage be for a period of 10 years. Two, that if approved by voters, the capital improvement millage be added to residents' winter property tax bills. Three, that such funds collected through the capital improvement millage shall be used only for capital improvements and not maintenance and repair, which are funded in other ways, which should be continued. Four, that capital improvements to roads should coincide with capital improvements to water mains whenever possible. Facilities. The CAC recommends that the city council extend the term of this CAC for an additional period of 90 days, so that sufficient information to make a recommendation can be gathered. We understand a study is underway by STANTEC, which will be helpful with this regard. The CAC found that the information it was provided related to improving, repairing, and/or replacing our community center, ice arena, city hall, and historic firehouse was inadequate for the CAC to make a thoughtful, considered, and legitimate recommendation. The CAC also believes that in order to make any legitimate recommendation, the committee would need significantly more and meaningful input from residents that provided through the recent survey. While the CAC supports the idea of a new survey, it should include the options contained in the STANTEC study. Reasonably estimated costs for each be limited to city residents and be communicated to each household in a timely and effective manner. Ballot. The CAC also recommends that any ballot proposal related to its recommendations be placed on the November 7th, 2017 ballot. It is our position that doing so would be a more efficient option, as voter turnout is traditionally higher for a November election. Additionally, we feel that this option would be more economical and responsible than incurring the unneeded cost of an August election, which would likely only include our local matters. Such ballot proposals could easily be added to the November ballot at no cost. In closing, the CAC would like to thank the city council for this opportunity to have a positive impact on our city and its future. The CAC would also like to recognize and commend the city employees for their impressive efforts to maintain our city's infrastructure and facilities. The DPW's efforts to do the best possible job with limited resources to patch our crumbling roads and keep our water system from failing, all the while maintaining its high level of other services is a credit to that department. Also, the Parks and Recs Department's implementation of new, meaningful community programs and its creative use of available space, as well as city hall employees' commitment to perfor- its creative use of available space, as well as City Hall employees' commitment to performing their day-to-day duties in an outdated, failing building is all truly impressive. Respectfully submitted, 2017 Citizens Advisory Committee for Infrastructure Improvements.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
That is an impressive committee, doing impressive work. And if I, without objection from my colleagues, let me answer one of the questions. Extending the term for 90 days. I would be very happy to entrust the continued study to the hands of such a capable committee. And so, the next 90 days have been added. I don't hear any objections. So, but thank you so much to each and every member of that committee for the work, the study, the hours, that have gone into visiting the different parts of our infrastructure system and studying the financial challenges that exist. And so, back to Matt, where is our next step?
Thank you, sir. Well, the immediate next step is this report will appear on the city's website, probably by tonight, but definitely by tomorrow morning, so that any of our residents can review what was read here tonight, if they're unable to perhaps hear it, or if they just like reading it themselves. So, again, this will be a public document almost immediately. Next step, we are working through a STANTEC study, as outlined at the last meeting. We're working with STANTEC on looking at location and layout of a community center, as well as try to incorporate many of the uses that have been reflected through resident survey, through direct communication with residents, and try to get a layout that complements as many uses as possible. Again, looking at four different options, all of which remain on the table, of a recreation center alone, a recreation center with an ice arena, one with an indoor pool, and then one with an outdoor pool. So, space concerns are really driving that conversation now. So, that is our immediate next step. We hope to be able to report good and accurate information back to the community advisory committee, so that they can continue their work. And thank you for extending the period.
Thank you. Any additional discussion, questions? Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick questions. Our timeline is to when STANTEC wants to have this report completed.
From approval, at the last meeting, it was projected to be five to six weeks worth of work, and right now, we're on course to meet that timeline, so.
Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for the report, and thanks again to the committee for all their tremendous work. This is indeed a great wealth of information here that I look forward to processing in more detail. My extended gratitude to those who are continuing to renew for another 90 days, to dig deeper into these types of things. And I'm wondering, from a process perspective, if we'd have an opportunity to ask more specific questions? I know this report is relatively new to us, and so we haven't had a chance to really study it in detail, but, you know, a few of the points, I'd just like to understand a little bit more of the thought process, so maybe there'd be a point, either, you know, we could work through the details of how council may be able to engage with the group to ask those questions, or, you know, in a follow-up session, when a report, Part Two, comes out, or something like that, that we could kind of see it early enough, so we can mark it up with a few, you know, specific questions and things that we could offer, so that we can better understand and apply these appropriately.
Great. We'll make sure to do that. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt Height, 3525 Robina. I just had a question. I mean, I heard the report, and I understand that, you know, the case has been made that, you know, obviously, improvements do need to be made to the aging water systems and the crumbling roads. My concern is, is we're looking at, you know, does the city need the extra money? And yes, they do, but I don't feel that the plan, and I don't know how else to pay for, but I don't feel that the plan that's being presented, or the vague plan, would even address any of those issues in any, you know, short-term future, because if you look at .5 to one mile a year, you're talking about 20 years before you're even going to see any kind of an improvement as far as water main breaks, the, you know, our roads, you know, being noticeably better, water supply being positively affected. I mean, you're talking about 50 miles of roads, and at half-mile to a mile a year, and raising that money, in the meantime, all the issues that you say with our crumbling roads and our aging infrastructure, they're only going to get worse. So, I worry that by raising the money, and to me, the money that they're suggesting sounds substantially higher than what was first mentioned at the work session, I just worry that if we do come across something that, some major comes along because we haven't addressed it, now our hands are tied as far as trying to address it, you know, in a better manner, because we've raised it by a significant amount. And that's my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. These are all questions that need to be reflected upon as the committee continues its work. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Motion Number M-1717, matter of appointing Brandon Alger to the Environmental Advisory Committee with a term expiring on June 2018, and David Milner to the Historical Committee with a term expiring on July 2020.
Is there a motion to approve M-1717?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Mayor Protam. Baker would support, by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have before you two volunteers who are ready and willing to serve. The Environmental Advisory Board, even if the application's approved, the city will continue to have two additional vacancies on it, so the Environmental Advisory Board does really good work, and they're actually in a unique time, because they're actually looking to restart a lot of their efforts. So, we continue to look for new members on that. Our Historical Committee is another one that's always welcoming new members, those with an interest in Berkeley's past and preserving it for Berkeley's future. Mr. Alger and Mr. Milner are both very qualified. Mr. Milner, Mr. Milner is a long-term resident of our community, and Mr. Alger's background just very, very uniquely fits with what we're looking for in the advisory committee. So, both of these come to you with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. You've all had an opportunity to see the material. Impressive indeed, and appropriate. Are there any questions, discussion? Hearing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1717?
Kadakel?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. We thank them for volunteering to help those varying committees. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Resolution Number R-0717, matter of authorizing the Parks and Recreation Department to apply for the 2017 Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Grant to provide park improvements at Oxford Merchant's Park.
Is there a motion to approve R-0717?
Move to approve R-0717.
Support.
Approved by Councilmember Turbrack, but support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have been in the course of making some significant improvements to Oxford and Merchant's Park for quite some time now. We're happy to be to the point where we're ready to take the next step and actually look for some state funds in order to make ours go a little bit farther. So, Teresa, our Parks and Rec Director, is joining us tonight. She's going to talk a little bit about our intent and what some of the next steps would be.
Good evening, council. Thank you, city manager. So, next step, I feel like I've been before you many times throughout this process, and will continue to be. We're very excited. Last year, when we were doing the park planning, obviously, we talked about applying for grant funds, but because of the timing of everything, we had to actually go through the park planning, do the drainage work, and now we're here. There are three different state funds that we had identified to possibly apply for. We are applying for the one with the highest possible amount. We're not asking for the highest amount, but it allows us to go for a little bit more, and then depending on what we match, we get points for that percentage match. So, what we're requesting from the state is $180,000, and what we're asking the city to match is 42% of that at a cost of $130,000. What we're hoping to get out of that are two things that have been identified the most in our last two five-year plans, as well as when we went through the planning process with Land and Landscape, and that were restrooms and then also a splash pad. We've looked at the cost of different splash pads and restrooms in other communities that have actually been constructed over the last couple of years, and came up with our cost plus engineering plus contingencies, and that's how we got to the amount that we're asking for. We also have different plans, we also have in the plans for the 2018-2019 budget to do a walking path, so that'll add into the universal design access of the restrooms. Just a little bit on the timing of how this works, and when we apply, the grant is due April 1st, so we've been steadily working away at it for the last, really, over a month now, about a month and a half, we've really been plugging away, and we'll continue to until that April 1st deadline. We then will get initial scores in August of this year. We can then resubmit or adjust some of our application based on the information that we get back from the state, and we find out in December if we receive those funds. The state does work on about a one-and-a-half to two-year time lapse, so when we see those funds, it's more like a 2019, but we have to have the support of council. We do have the support of our Recreation Advisory Committee, as well as different local groups who are writing letters of support, and we're really excited about the process. It's a lot of work that they, you know, want, you know, a lot of boxes to tick off in order to apply for this, but again, we think that this is a great thing for the community. It's a space that hasn't been developed. I was before you a couple of months ago, talking about the drainage that's actually starting tomorrow, so each step is really development of a great space.
Excellent. Thank you. Just the thought crossed my mind as you were speaking, amongst the options that the CAC is looking at are swim pools and with inside or outside and so on, we need to kind of connect the splash pad thought somewhere into the equation.
Yep, and we have talked about that at the CAC meetings, that we were going for this grant for a splash pad, so that has been discussed.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Mayor Protam?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Timing question, so did we submit this on the 1st? Do we know approximately when the grantees might be recognized or?
Yep, so typically, end of November, early December.
Okay, so there's a lengthy process.
There's a lengthy process. Like I said, August, we will get an initial feedback. In August, they tell us, you know, if you change something here, they actually give you a chance to tweak your application a little bit, or to submit additional information that may help you, and that happens in August. So, we'll have a couple of months lag in between that, and then we find out if you're granted the funds, end of November, early December.
Thanks. And so, this will all be in the next fiscal year, so wouldn't the funds this year aren't affected and all that?
Correct, and most likely, to be honest with you, we have to show that the funds are available in the next fiscal year, but because of the lag that the state has, it would probably be similar to other CIP stuff, where it'll get pushed back a second year.
Sure. Do we know to an extent this is a competitive grant? Do we, are there 100 other communities, or are there six? Do we have any kind, what's the inside skinny on this?
Yep, so I've attended a couple of different workshops for these specific grants. Obviously, I've written state grants before, but for these specific grants, I just attended a workshop about six weeks ago. They, it's not based on the number of communities, it's based on the dollars that are released every year. So, for this specific, for this specific grant, the state releases, it's a little bit less every year, but a couple, about a couple million dollars, so, and then it goes to different communities based on what's asked. They do look at trails, which obviously, we don't have trails, and they look at natural water, but one of the other big components of the MNRTF, which is why we're applying, is development of an urban space, and we are considered an urban area.
Right, thank you, and good luck to you and the folks, fingers crossed, and whatever we can do to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gravlin.
I just wanted to clarify, this money can only be used specifically for the Oxford Merchant's property. It can't go in the general public budget to be potentially used for something else.
Absolutely not.
Specifically for, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Turbrack.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick points. First, there was a meeting a couple of weeks ago, the Parks and Rec Advisory Meeting was also a community input meeting regarding the grant and the process and the splash pad and the bathrooms, and there was a number of residents that attended that meeting, it was actually very well-attended, and a great discussion on some other options, you know, in terms of what the park may or may not include down the road. But again, this is, you know, this is a very important step in what is a lengthy process. I mean, it's already been a lengthy process, if you really think back to 2005, when that land was first gone, and then the process that the city has went through, working with the district in order to acquire the land, and then all the other steps that has come after, to see the drainage is starting already, the trucks are there, and then being able to apply for this grant, there's a lot that goes into that, and I'm certainly looking forward to seeing the response from the grant committee. You said in August, we would hear potentially if we need to?
Yeah, so we'll know if we need to make some changes, resubmit. Obviously, the fewer changes means that it's a better grant application, but it is a nice opportunity, right? But it is a nice opportunity to be able to, if we want to get more documentation or change things, you do have that opportunity.
Right. No, and again, I thank you for the work you guys have done, and the residents who attended the last meeting, because that's very important. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Kadakel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McCarleton, for all the work you've done. So, if you go for the maximum amount, is it a yes or no, or can they come back and say, we'll give you a lesser amount toward the grant?
They do not do that. You can always, you know, go back the next year and change the amount, but no, it's, they don't say, oh, well, we'll give you this much. It's, full project is funded or not.
Thank you. Very good. Anybody else? Seeing no one else, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-0717?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes. Good luck, Teresa, on that project. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Resolution Number R-0817, matter of approving applicant for issuance of on-premise liquor license under Section 521A1B of 2006 PA 501. Applicant Joel Backow of Atomic Dog LLC, 2705 Coolidge Highway, Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve R-0817?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadakel.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gravlin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our city attorney is going to do the heavy lifting on this particular agenda item, but I'll open it by simply saying that as part of the state's application process for obtaining a Class C or an SDM, or in this case, both, one of the requirements is the local government body, governing body has to approve of them moving forward on it. They have application materials submitted in here. For the most part, if I may editorialize, the state has taken a lot of a local government's leeway away in this process, much of the chagrin of many of the local communities, but there is still this step that needs to be satisfied here at the local level. So, Mr. Sterin, if you want to provide some additional information?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. I don't have too much to add. This is a special liquor license. It's an on-premises license, but it's not from the Class C quota that we get based on our population, but rather, it's a function of the premises being located in the DDA, and it requires certain, for eligibility, there's certain commitments that the applicant makes toward investment in the property and so on. So, it's an additional license. It is something that is tied to this particular property, so it's not one that can be transferred and sold to another community. It runs with the property, or, you know, disappears. But it is something that is issued by the state of Michigan, but like most on-premises liquor licenses, a prerequisite to the state's issuance is the local approval. So, that's what's before you tonight, is your consideration whether to approve this applicant for the available redevelopment liquor license.
I do believe there are members representing the applicant here this evening for you as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Linda Mayer. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, the Atomic Dog, with the owner here, Joel Backow. So, as your attorney has pointed out, this is an application for a redevelopment liquor license that is issued under Section 521A. Because it is a new license, the Liquor Commission does require your approval that the application move forward before they will consider it. This is a little, you do have a little bit more control than you would in a transfer situation, at least in the state's opinion. And I'm sure you're all familiar with the Atomic Dog. It's been here since about 2012. There's about 46 seats in there, and they're currently only open for lunch. The addition of the liquor license is really just to allow them to serve some beer and wine to go with these hot dogs, and hopefully, to be able to attract a dinner crowd, so that they can stay open a little bit longer. Any operational questions, I'm sure Joel will be happy to answer for you.
Very good. Any questions, discussion? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. As I look at the plan, you say there's 46, 47 seats. I don't see that in the plan today, so, but I can see about 20, unless I'm looking at I see seats on the upper level, it shows 12, and then it shows eight seats on the lower level. level and then some at the counter.
In the section where it shows private, I think to the left hand, if you can see that, there are tables in there that do not show up on this floor plan.
Okay, I figured it had to be somewhere.
There, there. 46 seats, no bar, I should point out. No bar, no bar service, no bar stools, just a service bar for the staff.
Very good. Mayor Protem Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you guys for bringing this, I think the redevelopment work, which is part of the basis of the application here, is tremendous. As a fan of the history of the city, the work that's been done on that particular property to honor and cherish the past and all the photos are proudly displayed in the front there, and yet you're building a wonderful tradition here for the 21st century. I think that's great. I appreciate that development there. From a timing perspective, I'm curious if we were to move forward with this, could you describe for us the timeline in terms of procuring the remaining, you know, approvals or agreements through the procedural process and then what it would take from an implementation perspective before the service might be available to the patrons?
Sure, we can speak to that. Right now, the Liquor Commission, once the city council issues, signs the resolution and sends it to Lansing, the application will be complete. At this point in time, Liquor Commission is running about 120 days on an application for a new license. It'll be assigned to investigate or go through the process, eventually be approved. Once it's approved, the investment has already been made in the property, as you acknowledge, so it's really a matter of getting a service bar up and running and getting some inventory in there because there are no physical changes proposed to the property.
Right. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Kadakel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. So this is going to be beer and wine only, correct?
It's, the license itself is a full Class C license, that's what comes from the state, so it would allow legally them to serve beer, wine and liquor. That is not the intent, at least initially.
Okay, and is this going to be like canned beer or are you going to put taps in or?
No taps, but cans and bottles.
Okay, and the wine would be also like?
Yes.
The bottles?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, anything else to be said on this matter? It seems like it probably would enhance your business.
Well, we were open until 7:00, but business just dramatically fell off after 2:30, 3:00. And we're facing a lot of competition with especially the restaurants and boutique restaurants that offer especially beer at night with dinner, and we just couldn't sustain 7:00. So the idea would be to close at 2:30 and reopen for dinner at 5:00 and offer a full-service dinner.
Very good. Well, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 0817?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Travlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M 1817, matter of approving the purchase of a 2017 Vector sewer machine at a total cost of $317,188 from Jack Dohany Company. Pricing includes a $90,000 credit for the trade-in of a 2007 Vector.
Is it a motion to approve M 1817?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are joined by our DPW Director Derek Schuler, who while he's making his way up to the podium, I will note that this is a planned expenditure. This was budgeted for in this budget year. Discussions and planning for it began at least a year ago and the product itself, the one that we're trading in for, that we're getting the $90,000 credit for, is a 2007. So the machinery is 10 years old at this point, the vehicle's 10 years old at this point. This is a vital piece of machinery that we utilize to maintain our sewer system at the most optimal capacity possible. This removes a lot of the items and the sediment to collect in there as well as keep adequate flow within the system. So without further ado, our DPW Director.
Good evening. Before you tonight is, as Matt alluded to, a planned purchase that was in our capital equipment replacement plan for, targeted for this year. And I would argue this is probably the most important piece of equipment that we own at the DPW. It is used regularly for sewer maintenance as well as hydroexcavation on water main breaks and water repairs. Hydroexcavation gives us the ability to basically suck out the soils, essentially hand dig around tight utilities that, something you cannot do with an excavator machinery. So it's a dual-purpose machine in that way and is used all the time. Extremely important piece of machine, a machine that we never want to have down. So we're looking to replace it. You know, this was a 10-year cycle. I would probably argue even a seven-year replacement cycle might be a good fit for a machine like this before you start to see very expensive type repairs. We've kept our current machine in very good condition, as you can see by the trade-in allowances for the machine, so it's been kept very clean and we're planning to exercise that trade-in on it. So we went out for a public bid on this. We've demoed many units. In, as part of your packet, you'll see a detailed spreadsheet that Sean and I worked on comparing the, I believe, five different units that were submitted for bid with prices ranging from $466,000 to the 317, different makes and models. So we're looking to stick with Vector, which is the current machine that we have now. And a primary reason for that is because the service that we have close to us, they've been working with Vectors for many years. If you might recall, back several months ago, when we went out to bid for renting machines as part of the Saw grant, while we did receive two bids to rent a similar-type machine, one was actually a street sweeper that had a suction tube on it, so I would not, I would argue that's not a fair comparison. But Vector was the only other that would submit a bid for that, which tells you that these are the machines that I can get and these are the machines that in a pinch we can find, so I'm comfortable continuing to work with them. And given the pricing that you can see in the spreadsheet, given the addition and the options, we went through this. This was a multi-hour exercise of comparing and contrasting, taking into account all the different options. It's a very expensive piece of equipment, so we need to spend time on it. And you can see the trade-in allowances, the base prices, and then all the options. The pricing is pretty competitive outside of the one Vector unit that was supposedly a used unit, believe it or not, that was the highest price option coming out of California. I don't know what to make of that one. That was sort of just a flyer, I guess, if anything. So we're very comfortable with the Vector machine. Like I said, we've demoed many units, our staff, this is a machine that they're comfortable with. I'm happy with the service. I'm happy with the ability to get additional machines should we ever need them, so we're recommending approval at this time.
Very good. Any discussion? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. This Jack Dohany Company, we've done business with them before and they've been very responsive, I remember, to getting things fixed if we needed to.
They have, and providing loaners, you know, if the unit did have to come in for service as well, yes. Many options, you know, it behooves us to look at all of our options every time something like this comes up. So we wanted to make sure that we, you know, tested the waters and brought in all other pieces of equipment to make sure that there wasn't a better fit for us. But in the end, when you figure all the major components, the Vector was the one that we preferred.
It looks like their bid process, they covered everything that we wanted in detail where most of the other ones didn't, either didn't have the stuff available or?
Or didn't submit it. I mean, it was hard to tell. Either they couldn't meet that or they chose not to submit it, which, you know, we have to work with what's submitted. This was publicly bid, formally un-mitten, so we wanted to make sure we received all the necessary paperwork.
Also, I'd like to say for those people that are watching, this is the machine that keeps our sewers flowing in case we have another large rain and it's a very, very important piece of equipment in the city. And it's well-used.
It can do, it does jetting, the combination, it does jetting, which is, we can spray high-intensity water to clean the sewers as well as vacuuming. That's the term, combination sewer unit. That's what it does in addition to hydroexcavation and some other things as well. Very important piece of equipment.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for this material today and for the work that you and your team have done to keep the existing equipment running for as long as it has. I'm curious, where does this new device come from? Is it sourced locally? You mentioned California. Does it come across the country?
No, I believe that they're built in Illinois. So that's where they are built and then transported here to, Dohany is located in Northville, so then close proximity. And there were other competitors that weren't too far away as well, but none of them had the extended track history. You know, some of them have just started with this line of equipment, which never makes you feel real comfortable. You'd like to see some history there to notice, know that they can service those units.
Sure. So American-made, that's great.
That's correct.
Timing-wise, if we were to move forward, how, what's the procurement timeline on?
It's going to be, you know, I believe it was around 90 to 120 days. It's going to take some time to get the machine in. They have to build, the chassis comes off the line, the chassis gets sent to Illinois where it's fitted, if you will. So it's going to take several months for the equipment to come in, so we'll continue to use our current piece until such time as it's delivered.
Sure. And then one final question around the new equipment. Will there be any necessary training for the staff to operate?
Yes, and as part of the bid, they did supply, I believe, two days' worth of training with, I think, even other training options available. So yes, there will be additional training. There have been some changes from 2017 to 2007, so we want to make sure staff is aware of those changes.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Kadakel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Schuler. 10 years, is that an average or how long do these usually last?
You know, we, I think for us, we were looking at getting, I think, other pieces of equipment, I think, rose to the top a little bit quicker. And thankfully, the unit has held together very well. Again, I think I'd be looking at maybe a seven-year turnaround on these. But all things being said, it's performed very well. It's a very clean machine with, we haven't had a lot of expensive repairs to it, so let's just keep our fingers crossed that the next few months hold true and we'll get a brand-new machine in.
And you mentioned there's newer features on it?
Yeah, I mean, the electronics have changed quite a bit, so that's something that our staff will have to be educated on, but you know, the core, how it functions, hasn't really changed much. It's just getting used to the new tools, similar to buying a new car.
Thank you. All comes with Siri radio.
Yeah. We passed on that option.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Just another comment, since we're upgrading from 2007 to 2017, we're going to Tier 4 emissions on this, so we'll be using the diesel exhaust fluid on this vehicle and our people have all been trained on that already, so they know how to handle that, so we'll be meeting the latest emissions on this chassis.
Yes.
Very good. Well, then, we're ready for a vote. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 1817?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Travlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M 1917, matter of awarding the contract for the Harvard Road reconstruction and water main replacement project to lowest qualified bidder, FDM Contracting Incorporated of Shelby Township, Michigan, in an amount of $1,562,077.16. In addition, allocate $231,500 for construction engineering services to Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, and $156,000 for construction contingencies.
Is it a motion to approve M 1917?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Baumgarten, we're talking a lot of money.
Yes, sir, we are. And we're talking about a really exciting project. It's one that improves both the streets as well as the water system underneath and the sidewalks. So we're getting really triple our money, or triple our benefit for this level of monies. We did go through a competitive bid process, as we do for any expenditure of this size. We did have, this time, one applicant, so they did receive quite a bit of scrutiny, more so than perhaps some of our more competitive bids. Our representatives from HRC are here to speak to that. But because it is such a large and somewhat unique project for what the city of Berkeley has done in the past, this is one that we are actually very, very excited about. And the city and the residents that live along Harvard are really excited to see because once we can get past the construction phase, they'll have the best road in the city. So Derek?
They have waited a long time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bags that have brought up.
Yes, no more bags of gravel on the podium. She brought it. All right, last bag of gravel.
Last bag of gravel is in. Okay, Derek?
And this is truly an exciting day. We've been working on Harvard now for quite some time. You know, design was authorized approximately a year ago. That process takes some time. We've met on-site with residents, we've delivered some flyers, and we will have more interaction with the residents as the project continues. So it is a very exciting day. I hope that we can have more of these awards in the future more regularly. This is a new project for us, but an exciting project, so we're looking at the reconstruction of Harvard from Woodward to Cass, full, brand-new water main, brand-new road, curb and gutter, driveway, sidewalks. It's a full, what I would call, full reconstruction, so the entire right-of-way will be new for this, for this project. I don't know that we need to get into the history of the water main on Harvard. We've had many, many breaks there. The road itself ranks as the poorest in the city. This was the logical place to start. Obviously, I would love to have gone west even further, but we've got to draw the line somewhere, so Cass is where we're dividing it. It's approximately a half-mile at the costs that are shown here. So we basically worked with HRC, went through the design process. We did publicly bid the job and we received actually eight bids on this project and all very competitive bids. If you look at that bid summary, we're always encouraged to find bids that are relatively tight and within the engineer's estimate. In fact, the low bid was a few hundred thousand dollars below the engineer's estimate, so we always like to see that. We like to see those numbers tight and that's what transpired with the project. So we're very excited about FDM Contracting of Shelby Township was the lowest qualified bidder on the project. And I'll let Eddie from HRC maybe give a little bit of background on that contractor as we checked references.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. FDM Contracting from Shelby Township, as Derek said, it actually stands for Fred and Don Marum, they're a brother duo, who've been in business about 35 years. This company, they've actually incorporated in '98, so they've been in, together since '98 for this company. We've worked with them a few times over the years, a few projects, and done very well on their projects. We also, as in any project, especially of this size, we're going to check references. They did submit about six to seven pages of references for various jobs, similar to this type of job, where you have a full reconstruct, utility replacements, pavement replacement. And they did actually, they actually done a lot of work around the area, a lot of Royal Oak work, pavement and water main utility replacements. They've done a lot of Birmingham work. They've also, we've also checked a couple of references for some gross point work they've done in the city of Durborn, and all had very good things to say about the contractor. As you know, they were almost a few hundred thousand dollars under our estimate, which is great. We've checked all the numbers, everything's checked out, just had a couple of small errors, but they're still by far the little bit. And we're just, we're getting ready to go. We've checked their financials, everything's checked out with them and we're, you know, pending the approval award tonight. We would move forward with them and have a pre-construction meeting with them and go over all the fine points of the project and get ready to go. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten.
I was just gonna, no, I appreciate the correction from, from our staff here. I, I misread that to say, I, when I said there was one contractor, there was in fact eight contractors bidding on this project. I apologize for misspeaking.
And as far as where we go from here, we'd be looking to, as Eddie alluded to, have a pre-construction meeting. The contractor would have to submit a schedule that we would have to review. So I can't give you a start date here tonight, but that's gonna be coming very soon. There were some milestones set up in the contract for project completion, I believe in November of this year. So they, we give them a, a couple of milestones to work with, but they need to prepare a detailed schedule that we will be reviewing and approving. We're also working on a frequently asked questions flyer for the residents. It's several pages long, quite detailed. So it's something that I think will help answer a lot of the questions and concerns from residents then, so we're hoping to hand-deliver that as well to all the impacted residents in the near future. We are impacting approximately a hundred homes with this project, directly impacting, just to give you a sense of, of what we're dealing with. So we plan to use the hard copy notices delivered to the homes, as well as the website for notifications. And, you know, we look forward to meeting with the contractor and then setting some of these dates in play.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Of course.
Of course. Lots of questions, yeah.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was glad to see that you did an alternate bid on HDPE, but I was surprised at the results. Twenty-five thousand dollar plus to go to HDPE, which I was surprised at.
Yeah, so just to paint that picture a little bit, we did have an alternate in the bid specs. So the base bid was for ductile iron water main, and we did an alternate for HDPE plastic water main, both of which have their advantages. And, and we expected that, that the plastic would come in lower than the ductile iron prices because the price for plastic is quite a bit lower than ductile. But as you can see from the bid results, that isn't the case. So it made that decision relatively easy, that we're gonna be putting in ductile iron pipe with this project, so.
Is that probably because the contractor's experience with HDPE is there with ductile iron?
Yeah, I, I think there's a factor there. Demand probably has a factor to it. The HDPE, which we have used in some areas of the city, when you have very specialized water main replacements, directional drilling, for instance, under twelve-mile and Coolidge intersection, we used HDPE because, you know, there's the, the boring options available with it. So it has its place, and plastic is, and a lot of things is coming more and more into play. So it's something we wanted to make sure we looked at. But once the prices came in, it was a pretty easy decision for us to move forward with ductile iron.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion on this matter?
Sure, thank you. Thank you guys for, for this material, Derek. Thanks to you and the team for your leadership with this, and thanks to our residents for their patience. I know it's, it's, as, you know, I think if anything, we're underplaying the severity of the, the need for this. From, you mentioned the timing is gonna be forthcoming. Can we conceptually imagine this as being a, you know, a project in the next, in, in 2017? Or is this gonna carry on for multiple, yeah?
Absolutely, absolutely. This project and, and, you know, I don't know if it's gonna start in April or if it's gonna start in May. These have to be determined, but it is absolutely a 2017 project through substantial completion.
And can you, thank you for that. And can you describe, so we've talked on many occasions about the sidewalks and being able for pedestrian passage during, you know, construction work. Can you, those have largely been focused on construction within the property. Here, we're talking about construction in the, in the, on the roads and things. Can you describe how that process will work for folks trying to traverse?
And we'll, we'll be looking to nail this down with the contractor, but I, our intent is to keep as much of the sidewalk there as long as we can while the construction takes place. All the sidewalk, well, the mass majority of the sidewalk is gonna be replaced. Consumers recently had a project on Harvard, which is a good thing. They've replaced their gas lines, which is part of our due diligence. And as a part of their job, they replaced several slabs of sidewalk there. And we'd love to be able to save those. We certainly were, we're not gonna tell them not to put them back, as they are required to do. But, you know, our, our hope is to, you know, keep the job site safe. This will be a full reconstruction. The entire right-of-way will be disturbed at, at some point in time. So we are gonna have to phase this with the contractor very carefully because essentially, you're looking at full right-of-way excavation. This is a major project. This is as, as beefy as they come, so. But we'll, we'll have more details on that as we work with the contractor.
Thank you. Two, two last questions, if I may. First around the extent to which this connection terminating at Woodward but with other communities, like, I imagine, Royal Oak or something like that. So we'll have intergovernmental communications and partnerships with the sewer line and water line? Because it doesn't just end there, right? It connects to things.
It connects to our main on, actually, along Woodward, so it, it's just us.
It is just us.
It's just us, yep. We connect to our main.
Okay.
That runs parallel to Woodward. So there is no other jurisdiction that had to approve that.
I wasn't sure where that, yeah, perfect.
So it, we'll be connecting right into our main that exists north-south, if you will, on Woodward. So we did have to secure MDOT permits, state of Michigan permits, for the water main, soil erosion, et cetera, et cetera. But I believe we've obtained all of those at this time.
Cool, and then in terms of the communication with the residents, you mentioned the, the FAQs and things like that. Will there be ways that, that they will get regular updates along the, the timeline of the project?
Yes, we're gonna be looking to pass out, I, I think the hand-delivered flyers is, is the most direct way of, of giving good information when it comes time for the driveways to be paved, for instance. And the, the HRC inspector that's gonna be on-site is really gonna be our first line of defense as far as those questions go. They're, they're gonna be coordinating the construction activity. So we're gonna get that person's name and phone number and encourage residents to interact with them. If the call comes to me or the DPW, that's likely where that call's gonna go anyway. So we wanna, we wanna empower that inspector to be able to assist the residents in the most efficient way possible. Obviously, we're here to help, but that inspector is our eyes and ears on the job.
Great, and one final question, if I may. We opened this conversation with, I believe the comment was, that's quite a lot of dollars, something to that effect. I don't know if it would be fair to call this like the Cadillac of road and sewer projects, but for those folks that were involved in some of the earlier conversations around the Citizens Advisory Committee looking at the roads and sewers, you know, throughout our community, this, could you describe the extent to which this type of project is typical or a bit atypical for what we'd see across the community? Just so we can kind of understand, try to do the math, you know?
Yeah, and this, this is a question, this is a topic that I think we're gonna have to talk more and more about because what, what's happening on Harvard is, is the full, is the full deal. Is this what we're gonna do every year? I mean, that's left to be decided. It has a cost, it has a very expensive cost associated with it. There are certainly roads out there and water mains that could utilize this type of treatment, this type of solution, so. But not every solution is gonna be a Harvard. I need to make that clear. And we have to always remember, we're dealing with the water fund and then other funding, whether it's major roads, whether it's general funding. This project is utilizing water funds saved, as well as major road funds saved. You know, which every, I don't know, ten years or so, it seemed like we've done a, a bigger project using what we've saved. But we recognize that's not the sustainable solution. How much is up for debate? It has to be affordable. You know, these are big CAC questions that that group has, has worked on, and, and we look forward to more and more of those discussions. We'd love to do one of these every single year, just like this. You know, I think that would be great, and there's not a lack of demand there. So we'll see what the future holds.
Yeah, and it seems like the start of this project will overlap with the ninety days that the committee will be looking. So maybe there's an opportunity for them to kind of see some firsthand experience of a construction project of this magnitude to help, help them with their deliberations as well. Thank you again.
Thank you. Councilmember Terbrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is a project, I was, we've been looking at, working on, talking about, studying for a long time, and certainly glad that it is here. But as you mentioned, and tying in with what the Citizens Advisory Committee has been looking at, so we're talking about a half-mile, and, and, you know, about one and a half million is, is what we're looking at. But again, this is a complete reconstruct, full water underneath. Does not necessarily mean that that has to be the case. Everywhere in the city, and all the local streets. So that's something to keep, keep in mind, whether they're, they're milling and overlaying as opposed to this, which is a, a complete reconstruct. But I do think this timing actually does work very well with, with the CAC and what they're looking at to get an idea. And like you said, Mr. Schuler, we've had to save for this for a while. And, you know, we can save, 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 and we can do one project. And then we have to save, save, save again and hope that we can do one project at least of this size and scope. So what the committee recommended today is, is a way to kind of keep some systematic maintenance upkeep without having to go through this process and endure the years of, of a road that is, you know, very low-rated, our lowest-pazer-rated road in the city, and not being able to just jump on it as quickly as we would like because we have to save up the funds first. So I, I think, you know, that fits in very well with what was discussed earlier. And I think having a way to systematically, you know, kind of maintain roads and, and not run into this, this process. Because once, once Harvard's fixed, we're gonna have another lower, lowest-pazer-rating road. And then it's gonna be, okay, when are we gonna fix that? And, and how long is it gonna take for us to save? Is it a complete reconstruct? Is it a mill and overlay? What are our options? Is there water underneath? Is there a main that needs to be worked on? So these are all things that certainly go into, to the discussion, the consideration. And what, what the CA said earlier is one way to kind of look at this and into hopefully remediate the situation so we don't always find ourselves, you know, having to wait years and years and years. And Ms. Jermaine, I know you have a, another bag. I'm not sure if that's a...
Another gallon.
A good bag, or, a good bag, or a bad bag, but if you wanna present your bag.
It's, it's like my birthday again.
This is your third one.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate that.
And I, on behalf of, and I think I've got one resident, fellow resident here with me, on behalf of the citizens of Harvard Road, at least the first two blocks off of Woodward, we would really hope that you would consider this motion and approve it. I have, I lived through the 1999 resurfacing of it. I lived through the Consumers Power project last year.
Water main breaks.
I, yeah, well, no, I, I haven't had too many water main breaks, thank goodness. Yes, I'm very lucky, I'm very lucky, or else I was at work when it happened.
Yeah, I think that's more likely.
But the, the other thing is just the cost that we're experiencing in repairs to our vehicles, not to mention if we park on the street, the threat of twisting our ankle with potholes that are continually springing up, which reminds me, we've gotta do something about that coming. And, and going from there, I, I really, you know, would have never thought, twenty-six years ago when we bought our house, that we would be hitting the mother lode twenty-six years later and having a full reconstruction. So I really hope that you would consider it. It would greatly improve our street. You know, like, my only concern is the skateboarders and rollerbladers that'll be on there. But at least we would get rid of our aggregate street and have a safer and better flow to our water, and also a safer environment for our community and our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Well said. Yeah. As, as, anything else?
That's all I have.
That's all I have. We have, these, these kinds of projects are possible, as Councilmember Terbrecht indicated, because of careful management of money. And I'd like to thank our administration, Finance Department, and all our staff who have managed money carefully to pile up a substantial amount of money, like you see on this page, to make this project possible. It, as you know, it's very easy to spend money, not quite so easy to collect it and save it for all our personal lives, as well as city funds. So I thank everybody for the effort that was made on the management of money side first, and then secondly, the project itself, and the effort to bring this to fruition. So I'm also excited and happy to ask Ms. Boucher to please call the roll on M-1917.
Grafflin?
Yes.
Kadecel?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you all very much.
Ceremonial handing. He's left holding the bag.
That's right. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight?
Motion number M-2017, matter of approving the purchase of 24 X2 tasers from Taser International Incorporated for the total cost of $45,058. Funds are available in Equipment Account 101310982000.
Is it a motion to approve M-2017?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadecel. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are joined by Public Safety Director Rick Eschman and Sergeant Nate Papke, who are gonna be presenting with you some information. I do wanna note, from a process standpoint, that this is, this has been studied for quite some time in our Public Safety Department. They did not come to this decision lightly. One of the things that makes this expenditure possible this year, as, as noted in your packet materials, is that our regular cycle of vehicle replacement has actually yielded the need for only one vehicle this year, freeing up some equipment funds in order to make an investment into this non-lethal remedies and tasers. That is what, how we see the, some monies coming for you. So it was not initially budgeted for, but this is not expanding our budget in any way. This is actually just reallocating budgeted funds to another purpose, so. Without further ado, Public Safety Director Rick Eschman.
Thank you. As you're aware, we currently do not have tasers. There have been problems inherent in the technology, as well as uncertainties and legal issues regarding the use of, when to use, when not to use the weapons. And that has caused delays. There have been deaths with the use of tasers, mostly due to heart-related issues. Taser International has now modified the weapons to eliminate that, or to eliminate much of it. They have provided an optional automatic shutdown, which makes the weapons safer and yet still effective. What they've done is they've cut the electricity deployment to five seconds, and then it automatically shuts off. And that has, has allowed us to, to now responsibly use them. Recent court decisions at the federal appeals level have clarified the issue, limiting the allowable uses. It has gone from verbal non-compliance, as the standard, to an act of resistance, meaning physical resistance likely to result in injury. So now we have defined when they can and cannot be used. So now we're ready to go forward and, and equip the officers. Sergeant Papke is an expert on this. He is a state-certified self-defense instructor and a certified taser instructor. He also knows a lot more about these than I do, so. I'll just briefly go over it. There are two versions offered by Taser International. One is the X2, the other is the X26P. We are recommending the X2 for $45,058, as opposed to the X26P, which is $38,192. The $6,800 difference, however, we feel is more than worth. Do you, do you wanna explain why?
Sure. So on the X2 model versus the X26P model, that's what we're talking about in a, in a small price difference. On the X2 model, it's equipped all the time with two cartridges, and that's significant. It's gonna allow you to not have to actually replace cartridges or reload the device should you need a second deployment. Either it's a miss, or there's another subject that's involved. So right, right away, that's a significant factor. And to expand on that, with missing on the X2, the X2, or either device, when the device is armed, you're gonna get a laser aiming, laser aiming. So it's gonna point a red laser, a red beam, a red dot on the intended target. On the X2, you're gonna have two laser aim. And the reason for that is because there's two probes that are fired out of the cartridges. It's gonna give you anticipated impact for each probe. I think those two factors alone are very significant. Additionally, on the X2, the cartridges are housed inside the unit, as opposed to on the X26, where they're on the outside. With the cartridges on the outside, they're more prone to damage. If the cartridge is damaged, it's not there when we need it, and we're paying additional money to replace broken cartridges. So in the long term, it'll save us money. Those are the main significant reasons.
Normally, with a purchase of this amount, we would go to a request for proposals. However, the RFP isn't necessary in this case because we are dealing with what is virtually a single source. There's only one other American-based company, Phaser Electronics, which is in Florida. They, however, are involved in a back-and-forth patent infringement battle with Taser International. Okay? They're ahead at the moment, but there will be refilings back and forth. And it would be unwise at this point, because if their right to produce market these tools were to end, we would have no way to get further equipment, to enforce warranties, or to get service. Additionally, virtually every police department in Michigan which has tasers uses Taser International, so we have interchangeability of weapons. I was gonna talk about the current budget, not having, but the manager did, thank you. So now we're open to questions.
Councilmember Terbrecht.
Thank you. Chief, Sergeant Papke, either one of you can answer this. Chief, you just mentioned, you know, every other municipality or city that, that uses tasers, currently uses Taser International. Do you have any idea how many cities, our neighbors, you already are using this type of technology?
We did a survey, and most.
Okay.
The overwhelming majority use this.
Okay. And then just kind of a follow-up, and I know there's a myriad of situations or opportunities when the use of, of this, you know, device may present itself. But if you wouldn't mind, Sergeant Papke, I mean, what is the, you know, most intended, you know, obviously, the use is to subdue the target, but, you know, what, what circumstances may this be the, your right option instead of having to use some other sort of lethal force?
Well, first of all, the taser device is considered less than lethal force. It's not, it's not considered to be a lethal force.
Right.
A lethal force weapon. So, if we are discussing a deadly force or lethal force issue, that's not the appropriate item to respond with.
Okay.
But what we would be talking about, the intent for this device, is to be used against someone who is physically resistive, that has the potential to injure themselves, an officer, or another innocent person. Self-defense. Self-defense of the officer, defense of a citizen, from physical harm.
Thank you. Any other question? Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Thank you, Honor. Thank you guys for this, Chief, and thank you to you both for the additional information. I recall prior conversations about the tasers, and I deeply respect the care and caution with which this department has studied this issue in the past. And the fact that we're ready to entertain this tonight, I think is, as you mentioned, a progression in the technology. The five-second timeout thing seems like a positive step, and that we, as a department, are ready. I'm glad to know we have such expertise on staff as well. I think I have three questions around timing, of when we would be able to receive the equipment, around training, you know, what would be necessary for us to be comfortable using it in the field, and then the third is, like, where would it go? Would this replace something that you have? Would you, I mean, you guys are pretty well-equipped there, so it's like, do you have another part of your utility belt somewhere? So, timing, training, and just how does it, you know, how would you be comfortable and effective with it?
Okay. So, the first one, we'll talk about timing.
Timing.
That's pretty easy. If we get approval, we'll place an order this week, and Taser is saying approximately four weeks we should receive them. So, we should have the devices within a reasonable amount of time. Second issue would be training. There is a set standard of training from Taser. It's approximately one full day of training. It involves the legal aspects, the function of the, function of it, when to use it, when not to use it, the, you know, legal, medical, medical care, follow-up medical care if someone is tasered. And then the officers will actually fire cartridges, you know, to me, and show proficiency in the operation of it. We anticipate being able to do that within probably a couple months after we actually receive them. It will take time to get through everyone.
Sure.
Once an officer is trained, they will be issued the device.
Okay.
So, we'll start to see, depending on how we do the training, we'll start to see them out there.
And then as far as, I'm sure you guys would find a little, a couple square inches in your belt to add this to the arsenal, huh?
Yeah. As far as replacement, there really isn't anything that we can replace.
Right. Right.
Everything that we have is needed at various levels of response.
Right. Well, that begs another question in terms of replacing. So, let's certainly hope that these, the cartridges are never, that aren't, they aren't needed to be, to be, you know, used or consumed. What's the average, you know, belt life or shelf life for those before they would need to be maintained or serviced? Is that part of how we keep these things operational?
Sure. So, the taser device itself is good for five years.
Okay.
It's, one of the things that we're requesting is an extended warranty, and the extended warranty through Taser involves any type of replacement, manufacturer defect. If an officer drops it and we run it over with the car, we send him the pieces and they give it, they give us a new one.
Nice.
So, that's the lifecycle for that. The lifecycle for the cartridges is also five years. They do contain a compressed nitrogen cylinder, so there's a life expectancy there. But we are only anticipate purchasing enough cartridges to get us through the current year. And then any old cartridges will be cycled down for training. So, we're not going to have cases of new ones expiring on the shelf.
Right. Right.
We'll rotate them through.
Thank you. That's, that's a good plan. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Have we included a basic load of training cartridges in our bid so that we can get the training done right away without expending all of our cartridges?
We have. So, the initial purchase is the taser devices, the battery packs with the automatic shut-off, holsters, and all of the necessary cartridges for training and for full duty. So, it's a complete package, everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Kadakel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you guys for doing the work that you've been doing on this project. You said that automatic shut-off after five seconds.
Yes.
Now, if need be to do another, what do you call it, zap or whatever, I mean, I mean, is there a delay between it, or?
No. So, on the devices that are not equipped with the automatic shut-off, well, I guess I'll tell you how the device operates. You're going to deactivate the safety, you'll aim, pull the trigger, the probes, the darts are going to deploy, and if they connect to the intended target, they'll complete the circuit. And then that device will run, on the old devices, it will run indefinitely until the officer releases the trigger. And what they found is, under stress during a fight, aggressive, physical situation, officers were holding that trigger for an extended amount of time. On the automatic shut-off, if, if the trigger is pulled, no matter what you do with the trigger, after five seconds, the device will shut down. If another application is needed, release the trigger, pull the trigger again, and you go.
And is there a certain distance as far as where the application can be, you know, processed on that person that you're?
Okay. So, there's generally two cartridges for duty use, a 25-foot and a 35-foot.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Gravlin.
Have you guys encountered a high frequency of situations in which you wish you would have had these, or has this become a standard equipment, where if you don't have them, the city would be liable for not sending you out there properly equipped? What, why is this coming before us, I guess?
I would say definitely the latter. It's become a standard. Taser has over 800,000 units currently in service in the United States. It's, it's a standard.
Okay. So, if you did not have that option at your disposal, that could be liable for us for not sending you out there with the proper equipment?
Correct.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else on this item? Very serious item. Make sure that our folks are properly prepared to deal with the difficult challenges you have to deal with every day. And we thank all of the officers for what they do for our safety. We're very proud of each one of them, and thank you for representing them so well. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-2017?
Kadakel?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Grafflin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item, oh, okay. Would you please read item number nine?
Motion Number M-2117, matter of authorizing Stevens Siller Tunnel to Towers to conduct a 5K run on Saturday, September 16, 2017, beginning on Hurley Field at Anderson Middle School.
Is there a motion to approve M-2117?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gravlin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This group comes to you for the second year in a row. They would like to, again, hold their Tunnel to Towers Foundation Annual 5K Race at Hurley Field. They would begin at, the race would begin at 7:30, with some activities and some introductions done beforehand. Last year, I was able to attend. I was, I was quite impressed. It was wonderfully emceed by our own mayor, Mr. Savage of Fox Two was able to attend, and rest his soul. But it's a great organization. It's, if you ever get the chance to look a little bit at the foundation and read the story of how they came to select their distance, and to hear the, the story of what, of how Mr. Siller passed, it really is a wonderful tale. And it's a great foundation, and it's a wonderful cause, and we hope to, again, support their 5K race. And we're happy that they're returning to Berkeley.
Thank you. Chief?
Okay. I have with us tonight, Mr. Tim Aitken and his family. He's the co-director of the foundation.
Yeah. This is my daughter, my, 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 sorry.
This is the, this is the second annual event. Last year, the event financed the building of a new custom home for an American soldier wounded in Afghanistan, a triple amputee. This year, multiple charities, as Mr. Aitken will explain, will be involved. Basics are, the race will begin at Hurley Field. It will go west on Oxford, then south on Elwood, east on Cambridge to Gardner, and then turn around and go back the reverse path. The DPW will provide barricades. My department will provide officers, and volunteers will serve as staff along the route. Having said that, I will turn this over to questions and to Mr. Aitken.
Yeah, no, thank you very much for the opportunity to come here to present, you know, our, our plan for this, this year's run. Just to kind of, a little bit more about the organization, we were able to help build a smart home for Sergeant Ben Everly, but the, the Tunnels to Towers and the Stevens Siller Foundation does even more than smart homes for wounded veterans. Last year, it was known for, last summer during the shootings in Dallas, when those police officers were killed, the organization raised, I think, $300,000 very quickly to support the, the families. They do, they do a lot for first, first responders, not just veterans, especially those that were, have been, you know, passed in the line of duty for, for their, for their family members and taking care of those arrangements. So, this organization and these runs, as, you know, to, to build awareness about the organization, but the, the funds go to a much broader spectrum. And, you know, there's a lot of organizations that, you know, support first responders and military veterans. And this, the Stevens Siller Foundation has one of the highest ratings in terms of, they, they contribute the most out of their, their operating expenses. So, again, this is, last year was, was a, was a great honor to work with the city and the public safety, which was just extremely accommodating and just really made it a great event. And we're looking forward. I hope it's the right thing to say, but we want to make it a lot bigger this year with, you know, a lot, last year we had 200 runners. We want to get 500 this year and just make it a big, we're talking about making it a timed event, but we don't want to stray away from it being a family event. You know, the highlight last year was when there was an elderly woman across the finish line with, you know, a hurricane accommodated by a public safety officer. So, that's kind of the spirit that we want to continue with.
Thank you.
Yeah. And these fine young ladies do a lot of the, a lot of the work with talking to other, you know, fire agencies throughout, throughout the city. There's just a lot of work that, that needs to get done, and they continue to, they canvassed the neighborhood last year with flyers and talking about the event and all that. So, they do incredible amount of work.
Yes, I remember last year. They did a fantastic job, and worked hard and made sure all the details were covered. So, it's impressive. And all of you are in Berkeley High School, Berkeley Schools?
Yeah, we're all at Anderson.
Anderson. That's right. Now, are there any questions, discussion on this matter? Councilmember Kadakel?
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was there last year too, and I remember the scene of the public safety officer walking the lady across. But you said, I want to thank you for coming back to Berkeley. You said you, you know, it's nice to work with the public safety and the administration, but it's easy to do when you have good people doing things for good causes, and I thank all of you.
And also too, I mean, we're just, we're all open for ideas too. If there's something you would like to see, or, you know, that, that didn't happen, I mean, you all have my contact information, but if, you know, can we make it a bigger event, or something you'd like to see, or, you know, I'll open, so.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for being here for a second year. I echo my colleagues' comments and compliments to the work that's been done. I'd like to give one of you perhaps a chance to, if you'd like to put a plug in for your website, or other ways that folks, if they weren't able to, to participate, how might they else be able to, to contribute to either raise awareness or contribute some funds? Anything you'd like to do to help let folks know how they can get in touch with you guys? That would be, that'd be super.
Go ahead. Okay. Well, on the Tunnels to Towers website, we have a link, and people can just donate to teams and just donate to the cause. So, they don't have to be there and run, but they can definitely give money to help and support the families of the first responders and the first responders themselves.
The other thing we did last year is we honored Officer Jason Gallagher from CBP Customs and Border Patrol, so that he's died from an unexpected cause earlier that year. And so, his family was there, and it was really cool. Everybody really reached out and came together, and CBP donated money. So, everybody, like, kind of, it was a way for us to get out the word about the run and honor Officer Gallagher. So, it was kind of a way for everything to come together nicely.
Very good. Thank you.
And then again, the, the website is tunnels, and then the number two, is that right?
Yes.
And then towers.org.
Org.
Get that URL out there, so folks know.
Very good. It's a wonderful cause and a wonderful event, and I'm looking forward to it again on September 16. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-2117?
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10?
Motion Number M-2217, matter of approving Berkeley Days 2017 event, beginning Wednesday, May 17, 2017, at 7:00 PM, and then Sunday, May 21st, at 4:30 PM, located at the Berkeley Community Center, 2400 Robina.
Is there a motion to approve M-2217?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's time once again to start planning for one of our greatest traditions here in Berkeley. It's, again, the annual Berkeley Days, which will happen between May 17 through the 21st. This year, 2017, we have an action, the, I should say, the Berkeley Days Committee has, has put a number of new items and age-old items into this year's event. There include a 5K race, the Taste of Berkeley event, a horseshoe challenge, a petting zoo, a pooch pageant, and along with other various carnival rides, games, and other entertainment opportunities, as well as a pancake breakfast and a beer tent. So, again, a great event. It's just around the corner, and both Public Safety Director, Chief, Rick Eschman, and Ms. Denise Branner, the Berkeley Days Chair, is here to expand upon it.
This is the 91st annual, and I have to say, we have never had a problem, a significant problem, in my recollection. And so, there are a couple of issues here to discuss. Denise may want to add another day, the 16th. She'll explain what that's about. So, this may be moved up a day. Additionally, there was one issue with the insurance, just a technicality that someone may have noticed, wording that is required in the insurance coverage was not there. However, this is their old policy. It will be replaced before the event with the appropriate language. The coverage is more than adequate, it was just a technical wording issue. So, Denise?
As far as the issue goes with the insurance, we do get, I gather, the insurance policies from several different organizations, not only Berkeley Days, but also Skirbex, the American Legion with the beer tent. That language will be included on all of it, and before the event happens, we will absolutely make sure that the city has all of that proper paperwork in order, as well as the hold harmless agreement. So, that will all be signed. As far as the events go, as of, when I filled out the application, when I filled out the permit, we were trying to, as, as you know, I'm always trying to expand it and make it bigger. And we have the softball game on Wednesday, the 17th, and that's always, it's always so much fun. But we've got, the carnival comes into town, and everybody starts getting a little bit excited when they start setting up on Sunday. So, we've been trying to look to see if we can fill something in on either Monday or Tuesday. And the Friends of Parks and Rec have come in and said that they are interested in hosting an event on Tuesday night, the 16th. What they're hoping to do at this point, they're looking at maybe a game night, an outdoor game night on the grassy area outside the community center. So, it'll be out of the way of the carnival people. It's still more of an idea than an actual full-on plan, but that is the one event that we are hoping to add this year. As far as the other events we have, we've obviously got the softball game. We've got the Midway will start on Thursday, the 18th. We have the Taste of Berkeley, which is kind of our kickoff. You know, everybody gets really excited about that. That's going to be even better this year. They're adding a silent auction to that. So, that is sponsored by Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance. And it's just, it's so much fun, and it's a fantastic event. Also, what we will have going on, because parking is always at a premium up there, the Cub Scouts will be doing the Park Your Ride again. So, just so nobody's confused that the Cub Scouts are going to be doing valet parking or anything, we've set outside an area where people can ride their bikes, their skateboards, their scooters, and there's a safe, secure area to park those, those bicycles, that will be monitored by the Cub Scouts. On Friday evening, everything else kicks off. We'll have the Midway. We will have the craft show, which is getting bigger and better every single year. We are going to have, the library will be hosting the book sale. We are going to have, the library will be hosting the book sale. This year, in the past years, we've tried to do a different theme every year. So one year it was the music program at the high school and it was fantastic, the school raised enough money to buy new drums for the drum line. We've tried to do sporting events. Last year, because it was the 90th anniversary, we kind of focused on the history of Berkeley. This year, we would really like to showcase our volunteers and the volunteers that we have in the city. There are a lot of different organizations and I've heard it over and over again from different volunteer organizations, well, we'd love to get involved, we just don't have the volunteers. So what we'd like to do is offer to all of the different volunteer organizations in the city, we're going to have a showcase, we're going to have an area where these organizations can set up tables with information about their groups, with the contact, and anybody, we've got thousands and thousands of people that can walk through and say, oh, Berkeley Junior Women's Club, I didn't know we had that here, I'm interested, a Lions Club, really? We've got Lions, I'm interested, let me sign up. So we really want to highlight the volunteer organizations and give those organizations an opportunity to get more volunteers for the groups. So if there is a volunteer organization that we haven't gotten in touch with and you're saying, hey, me, me, I want to be involved, contact us at BerkeleyDays@yahoo.com, you can go to our website at BerkeleyDays.com, you can find us on Facebook, you can just write a letter, address it to Berkeley Days, the post office will find me. Call me, you know, you can call Parks and Rec, they've got my number, somehow you can get in touch with me. But we really want to get all of the different volunteer organizations represented this year. We're going to have the Bike Safety Poster Contest, the Beer Arena will be in the ice rink again with music and entertainment, karaoke is going to be there on Friday night. So Mayor, we expect to see you up there singing on Friday night. Where we will also be presenting the Citizen of the Year and Humanitarian of the Year and those forums are also available on our website at BerkeleyDays.com. If you've got somebody that you'd like to nominate for Citizen of the Year or Humanitarian of the Year, you can download those and nominate that. We've also got our Horseshoe Challenge, which is between City Council and the Berkeley Days Committee, I know we've been practicing. We've been, we've been conditioning.
I wasn't going to say it, but I'm glad you did.
Conditioning and training all winter. We've been lifting weights, we've been practicing.
Been lifting the trophy.
Working out, some of us had those injuries last year, we've been working those out. But that will take place Friday evening at 7:15. On Saturday, we will have the Pancake Breakfast. This year, we are going to have Batman and Wonder Woman are going to be at the Pancake Breakfast at 10 o'clock. So we're going to have the superheroes there. The Pooch Pageant is also going to be on Saturday and that is a fun dog show, it's not anything where you've got to have, you know, your papers and your pedigree for your dog. It is, and all dogs are welcome, we just hope they play nice with others. Categories along the lines of looks most like the owner, best trick, worst trick, looks the least like the owner. So those kinds of things and that will, that will happen on Saturday morning. We also are having the Race on Saturday morning, normally the race is the week before, we do the race Mother's Day weekend, however, Race for the Cure is that weekend and as much as we like to think that we are all of that, we really just can't compete with Race for the Cure. So we had to move it, it will be part of, it will be on Berkeley Days weekend now, so it'll be on the 20th. It'll start at Hurley Field and will just be part of the other festivities that weekend. We'll have the search and rescue dogs will be there, we'll have robotics demonstrations, we're going to have entertainment. Last year, we added on Sunday, the Princess event and the Jedi Training. If you did not get a chance to see that, you have to come this year, it was the greatest thing that we've ever added, it was so much fun to watch these little kids all dressed up in their Star Wars, to go through the Jedi Training, I mean, we had the Jedi Warriors, it was, it was awesome, it was so exciting, I wanted to jump in with the lightsaber and parade around with them, it was so much fun. That'll be in the ice arena, tickets are available on our website also, so you can get tickets, and those sold out last year, so if anybody is interested in getting tickets for the Princess T or the Jedi Training, go online and look for those tickets. We've got an international horseshoe tournament, we've got a petting zoo, and we are hoping this year, we would like to add a dunk tank, so we may be calling, looking for volunteers to get in the dunk tank. I've already talked to Councilman Kedekel, he's volunteered.
He did.
And I think he also volunteered you, Councilman. I thought, I thought he signed both of you up at the same time.
I get to throw it him first and then that's.
So, okay, that's fair enough. So we've got a lot of fun things planned, you know, it's going to be fantastic, I am open to any questions that you have or events that you would like to see or additions. I know we haven't had, we haven't had any issues, we work very well with, with public safety on this event. We've raised tens and tens of thousands of dollars for all the different community service groups. One thing that I don't know people are aware of, all of the money that we raise at Berkeley Days does go right back into the community, to all the different community service groups. We keep just enough to let us start the process for next year and everything else goes back into the community. So it really is a community, a fantastic community event.
Are there any questions for Denise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment, in order to be part of that silent auction, you do have to buy a ticket to the Taste of Berkeley, so if anyone asks you, you can't just walk in and go to the silent auction, correct.
Why would you not buy a ticket for the Taste of Berkeley?
You're right, and they go on sale tomorrow.
And there's a link on our website.
Anybody else? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, just a comment, it's a fantastic event, I worked closely with Denise on planning for this thing for a few years and they do an excellent job, I just want to commend the committee for a fantastic job.
Thank you very much, the committee works very hard all year long and we've got fantastic volunteers.
Poli chef, your tier, and charge up your cattle prod.
It's a fantastic event and I hope that the weather will be wonderful as it always is. I'm certainly relieved that you guys have started weightlifting and conditioning and things like that, it'll make it much more competitive. We're looking forward to it. Thank you Denise for all you do, making this a wonderful event. Ms. Bautcher, would you please call the roll on M. 2217?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gavlin?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we come to the, thank you, now we come to the communications portion and Councilmember Blanchard is up first.
I'd just like to go over a few things that the Chamber of Commerce is doing, some of the events that they got planned. Coming up on March 30th is Berkeley Ladies Night Out, I know nothing about that, I don't plan on learning, so you'll have to find out yourself what that's all about. Again, Berkeley Days, the Art Bash on June 10th, Berkeley Community Garage Sale, June 23rd and 24th, and the Berkeley Street Art Fest, which is a new one this year, is July 15th. There'll be chalk artists and there'll be people painting murals around the city of Berkeley, so that's something to see. Another topic, I chair the Coolidge Traffic Committee and that committee's made up of two people in the City Council, two people in the Planning Commission, two from DDA, one from Chamber of Commerce, one from Environmental Committee, and one from Public Safety. And what we're charged with doing is to look at possible methods of calming the traffic on Coolidge, to reduce vehicular speeds, promote safe and pleasant conditions for motorists, bicyclists, pedestrians, and residents, to improve the environment in the area, to improve real and perceived safety for non-motorized users of the street, and promote shopping and encourage walkability. Some of the things we're working on is we've added increased number of speed signs on We're working on trying to get the wayfinding study funded so that we can get additional signs to show people where parking lots are and where the different places in the city they might need to go. And we're also looking at putting some additional crosswalks on Coolidge to be able to move the pedestrians back and forth without getting them run over. So that's what the Coolidge Traffic Committee's been doing and we're, it's an ongoing effort, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, a couple quick things as well. First again, thanks to the Citizen Advisory Committee for all of their great work, sort of incredibly thoughtful reports, and I appreciate the work that the administration and staff have done to interact with the group and, and help us better understand what our options are and the potential positive benefits to our, to our community, so thank you for that. Our Downtown Berkeley, Downtown Berkeley has a new social media and website campaign that's underway, you may have seen the branding push recently, new approach to promoting our downtown. The website is Downtown Berkeley Mi, Downtown Berkeley M.I., downtownberkleymi.com. Our DDA Director is in the audience here, thank you so much for all that you're doing and the leadership that you've brought to the, to the board to help make these things, these things happen. Let's see, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram handles are at Downtown Berkeley, so for those of you social media savvy folks, check that out and contribute to the narrative, right? We have a great story to tell and it can only get better from here, so thanks to you all for, for seeing that and helping support all that downtown has to offer. The next couple of days, Berkeley will be represented at Michigan Municipal League, we have a Capitol Conference, it's an annual event, usually in the spring, this one happens to be tomorrow and Wednesday, so a Tuesday, Wednesday affair, it's called the Capitol Conference because as, as you may gather by the name of it, it is in Lansing, which just happens to be our capital. It is a focus on state issues that affect municipalities, much like ours. We talk about things like crowdfunding and community investment, and again, a theme that has emerged a couple of times here throughout the night is, is infrastructure investments and where that funding comes from. You may follow what's been going on at the federal level and at the state level, and if, if you do, then you recognize that the cities are, really have an uphill climb ahead of us here to try to even preserve the funding that we have today, which causes at the local level to have to shoulder a lot of that burden. The federal level would propose some significant cuts to municipal support and even at the state level, there's some, some serious challenges. I have all these notes here about the things I want to lobby on behalf of Berkeley, I won't get into all the details there, but I have a healthy agenda. Again, being at the Capitol Conference, we have exposure and opportunities to meet with our, our state legislators of the Senate and the House, and we will be ensuring that they hear from us with the issues pertaining to funding among, among other things there as well. And it was Letitia Elizabeth Langdon, 19th century English poet, who once wrote, "An apt quotation is like a lamp that flings its light upon the whole sentence." And that's an apt quotation is like a lamp that flings its light across, over the whole sentence. And, and I didn't fling one last time, if you guys remember, twice I'd actually missed the opportunity to offer quotes, I had them prepared and, and just got carried away and last time I was talking about the robotics stuff and advocacy that our historical committee members had done at DC. So I just wanted to thank the folks that, that were so kind and how that was pointed out to me that, hey, you missed a thing and, you know, it was all ready, but next time we'll, we'll keep the, we'll keep the streak going again, so, thank you.
Thank you. Never put off till tomorrow what you can do today.
Wise words. Councilmember Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick items coming up through, at the community center, actually. Breakfast with the Bunny is coming up on April 8th, you can get tickets at the community center right now, so again, Breakfast with the Bunny will be on April 8th. And additionally, an exciting program, it's called Acting Out Community Kids Theater and they have released their spring and summer 2017 schedule, so Acting Out Kids Community Theater, if you're not familiar, what does that mean? Well, let me tell you. Developing leadership, performing and communication skills, gaining confidence, making new friends and having fun through a variety of methods, and one method is acting classes. So kids can learn acting, improv skills through a variety of fun games and skits, and if you're in the first through fifth grade, the classes are Mondays from April 10th to May 22nd, from 3:45 to 4:40, so it's after school, first through fifth grade, and if you're sixth grade and up, it is, it's the same time, April 10th through May 22nd, but that is 4:45 to 5:45. So again, our classes, Mondays, and that is learning acting and improv skills, there's going to be a showcase also on May 22nd of all of the skills that they've learned through this class. On top of that, if you can't maybe get to all the classes, you have a lot of other things going on, they have a few drop-in days, drop-in acting events, kids are welcome to join us. Again, improv games, friendly, casual, non-competitive environment, but it's a great way to learn acting, building confidence and making new connections and friends. New participants are always welcome and the three days that you can drop in are March 24th, April 28th, or May 12th, you can also find this information online, March 24th, April 28th, and May 12th from 3:45 to 4:45, ages eight to 18. You can go in if you're not quite sure you're ready for acting class, but you want to see your improv skills, stop in there. And they have a musical, or acting and musical theater camp, so this is the final event that you can get into and that's August 28 through August 31st, that's a Monday through Thursday, and the camp is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and this is for ages eight to 18-year-olds as well. You can go to the website, AOKTheater.org, AOKTheater.org, but you have to register through Parks and Rec, through our Parks and Recreation Office and all the events are located at the community center. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavlin?
The Tree Board met last Monday, the 13th, and as we discussed earlier in the resolution, we've designated April 9th to the 15th as Arbor Week in Berkeley, there will be the tree planting on the 12th and the Tree Walk Saturday, April 22nd. Further, there will be some more community child, children activities at the library, so check the library website for more information forthcoming about that. Also, at the Tree Board meeting, Mr. Judd Hart was in attendance finally, so that was very exciting for the Tree Board members to actually get a chance to talk to him, and he did bring with him some ordinances from Birmingham and how they have done, been very successful in protecting a lot of mature trees on building sites. So the Tree Board will be looking at how we can possibly update our ordinances to better preserve more mature trees in Berkeley, specifically on building sites. On Tuesday of last week, the Planning Commission had a work session in which they did receive the very preliminary plans for the last let property, the churches to remain, the school and the gymnasium have been sold, with the intent to be converted into apartment buildings, the buildings will remain, they will be converted, or the proposal's to be converted, and no plans have been made public, they did take all of that back, this is again, the very early preliminary stages. And Mrs. Vivian Carmody was also present, she's really hit the ground running as the DDA Director, she's intending to put out a request for proposals for design guidelines for the downtown, the DDA District, to give a more consistent look and feel to the businesses in the district moving forward, so, thank you Vivian. The Planning Commission's next meeting is next Tuesday, the 28th at 7:30, right here, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kedekel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 10th, in addition to the Capitol Conference and the other conferences they have, there are different committees and I serve on the Michigan Municipal Services Committee for the MML, and I attended one of our meetings and it was really good because what we do, our committee, we go over the proposed bills that the House and Senate in Michigan would like to see pass, and we decide as a group whether we want to support it, it directly affects our municipalities. So there are city managers, there are elected officials from all over the state of Michigan that attend, both on the phone and in person in Lansing. So as things have, develop, I'll let you know what's happening. As you noticed, between Councilmembers Blanchard and Mayor Protem Baker, that's your name, Councilmember Stedman is missing, I spoke to her briefly this evening, she's very groggy, she had very serious rotator cuff surgery and some tendons repaired, and so she will be out of action for, you know, a few weeks, but I told her I'd say hello to her, so hello, I mean. Last week, Commissioner from Huntington Woods, a commission, they call it a commission, we call it a city council, one of the commissioners, Jules Oldsmen and I, met in light of the power outage that we just had, and we are putting together, this is not a city initiative from either side, but we're putting together a program where we can maybe get, you know, discounted prices on either portable or permanent generators, and we figure between our cities we get more and more people, that some of these manufacturers and/or distributors will give them to us at discounted prices. manufacturers and/or distributors will give them to us at discounted prices. And as things develop, I'll keep you abreast of what's going on there. Many years ago, when I was going through some personal situations, the Anger family was very supportive, and many of you have heard that last week Sergeant Ray Anger, former Sergeant Ray Anger, passed away. And I just want to give my heartfelt prayers and thoughts to Lori, and Todd, and Scott, and the entire Anger family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgut?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the same note with the storm response, I do want to thank the staff of the library and the community center for keeping extended hours while many of our residents were out of power. My family actually ended up having to take advantage of the community center's warmth and charging stations, because our house got very cold come, by Saturday. But big thank you to them, and for all the residents who took advantage of it, and all the residents that helped get the word out that those were available to their, to their fellow Berkliites. Also, if you'll notice the yellow flyer here, on Monday, March 27th, so a week from today, at 6:00 PM in our library, we'll be having, continuing the conversation on fighting rodents. Specifically, we'll have Joe Ginosa of Great Lakes Pest Control in to give a discussion on how to deal with rats in the community. We're looking forward to that. He's going to have a very open-ended, very informal conversation. He's going to have traps and talk about some of the ways that his company handles response to rodents when residents give them a call, as well as some ideas on what the city, how the city could partner with them on dealing with a rodent issue. You wouldn't know it from this past week or so, but we actually did have a pretty mild winter, which could cause our rodent population to blossom. Next up, sidewalks and chickens are both hot topic at the last meeting. We do have planned workshops on the 3rd and on the 20th, our next two council meetings. We're planning to put those on the agenda to specifically adjust the sidewalks and the chickens. So we're going to be bringing sidewalk ordinances, as well as some other items for construction site standards, back to this council on the 3rd, and then revising the chicken ordinance to come back to this council on April 20th. So two upcoming items. The last one, the last thing I have for you is unfortunately the saddest. We had a student in Berkeley High School pass away, and his fellow students, gentleman's name was Dominic Gasky, he's a Huntington Woods resident, but his fellow students want to honor his memory by putting blue ribbons on the streetlights along Coolidge and 12 Mile, so that, to keep his memory alive and to bring some awareness, awareness to the wonderful life lived, but one that was lived too short. So look for blue ribbons, and it's in memory of Dominic. Those are the items I have for you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. We have been busy working with the city manager and staff on a number of things. The fruits of some of that work will be coming council's way at, at some point in the foreseeable future. They include a number of what I'll call small ordinance amendments and tweaks on some of our police-related ordinances to kind of clear up some ambiguities, modernize our ordinances, and improve our public safety's ability to enforce some of the, the ordinances that we, we have in the books that haven't been looked at in a long time. We've talked before about the city being approached by various telecommunications facility installers. We, we all carry around these kinds of devices, and the demand and need for increased infrastructure to accommodate all that will continue for the foreseeable future. They're really trying to keep up with it, not just accommodate what's expected in the future. But at the same time, we want to be able to properly manage this growth of infrastructure, particularly within our road rights of way. So we have been dealing with at least a couple of different companies who, at some point soon, will probably be, be coming before you with requests to, to install various things within our public rights of way. And as I said, we're, we're working very hard to manage and minimize those, those encroachments. And last thing I want to mention that we'll be talking about again soon is our continuing dealings and, and study of medical marijuana, and how best to, to regulate that, as well as uphold the city's character and viewpoint on not, not allowing that to, to get out of hand or create any blight situations within our, within our city. So again, these are all topics that will be coming back to you soon.
Very good. Thank you. I'd like to just, once again, on behalf of the residents of the city, thank the Citizens' Advisory Committee for the amazing work that they are doing, and that their willingness to take on another 90 days of this, we're especially grateful, because careful deliberation of these matters takes a bit of time, takes longer than, than you imagine, because there is so much involved. It's so, such a complex series of interacting variables, that time is necessary, and the care that this committee has demonstrated so far is exemplary. And the residents of the city are well-served by those 15 people, and I thank them. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11?
Closed session, matter of considering whether to meet in closed session to discuss the written attorney-client privilege communication.
Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Terbrach, with support by Mayor Protem Baker. The meeting will be concluded, all we have to do is come out and conclude following the closed session. I just wanted that for the audience's sake. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
I'll take yours, too.